Welcome, everybody. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I thought you said, "Go ahead." Welcome, everybody. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, roll call. Here.
Here.
President.
Agenda review. Anybody have any changes, questions they want to make? We're good? Okay. Minutes, we don't have anything to review tonight. Public communication is reserved for those people that would like to address the Planning Commission on a topic that is in our purview but is not on the agenda tonight. Does anybody want to speak? I don't have any speaker slips. Okay, that's closed then, too. Old business. We have none. Moving on to number seven, public hearing for 797 Santa Margarita. It's a discretionary use permit to allow a wireless communications facility and related equipment for commercial purposes on private property within the public right-of-way in the open space zoning district. It's continued from December 3rd. Staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. This project is located at 797 Santa Margarita Avenue. The applicant is requesting a discretionary use permit to allow a wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment for commercial purposes on private property PG&E pole within the public right-of-way in the open space zoning district. This, the project location map. The site is on the northwest corner of Barcelona and Santa Margarita Avenue. And this is the location here of the project site. A little bit of background on this project. The project was first heard on April 2nd. And the project was denied at that time with our request to address concerns about visual aesthetics, noise, capacity need, alternative technology, and to provide more community outreach. On April 16th, the Planning Commission meeting was held. And at that time, the applicant requested that the project be reconsidered at the May 21st meeting. On May 17th, the applicant hosted a community meeting at Millbrae Community Center to provide additional information on the proposed small cell project site, addressing issues such as the visual impact, technologies, capacity needs, and noise impacts. On May 21st, 2018, the applicant requested it continues to June 4th for additional time to submit information requested by staff. Again, on June 4th, the applicant requested it continues to provide more alternative design options for the project site. The meeting was heard again on October 23rd. And there was, at that time, some small cell equipment design options that were provided for staff review. On December 3rd, the options, the four options were presented to the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission hearing, and staff had recommended Option D. At the time, the Commission requested additional information on the visual simulation drawings to illustrate the aesthetics and to provide information on the noise, noise study. Here we are. It was continued to date certain January 7th. Additional information, on December 19th, 2018, staff met with the applicant to discuss feedback that was received on the December 3rd, 2018 Planning Commission meeting regarding the visual aesthetics, the design of the equipment, and the location of the site. At this meeting, staff presented some new designs, options, that looked at using streetlight pole designs that would better present sort of a better visual aesthetic and sort of shield and hide the cell site equipment within a streetlight lamp pole. And one of the sites looked at was Alternative Site 10, which is just down the street from the location, right across from the field, as a potential site. But at that time, the applicants requested that, they wanted to continue with the existing site that they had on the corner that was presented, and they have provided the additional information that was requested as far as the, the design Option D that was recommended by staff. So they want, they desire to proceed with that option. This is the location of the site on the corner of Barcelona and Santa Margarita. And here's the field. The alternative site that was looked at was this location here. But the applicants would like to proceed with this location, the corner. This is the existing and proposed site plan. These are the existing and proposed elevations. This is the Option D, which has the two-foot antenna at the top. And then the equipment located down here with, there's a sort of a sheathing or like a cover that improves the visual aesthetics, covers the equipment, and you'll be able to see that in the visual simulations. This is the other elevation from the other direction. This is from the southeast. This is the alternative sites that were considered, and the green is the location that the applicants are requesting approval for. This was the capacity map that was submitted. And this is an overview of the small cell equipment design options A through D, and these were presented at the previous Planning Commission meeting and discussed by the Planning Commissioners. And staff reviewed these and recommends that Option D be the choice for, as the, the design with the least visually intrusive of the four options. These are the photo simulations. This is the existing site, and then this is the proposed site. You have the wireless antenna at the top here, and then the equipment located here with the, the cover. Another photo simulation from the opposite direction. This is another photo simulation shown much closer to the location. This looks to be about, maybe like 20 feet away. I'm looking down Barcelona. I believe that is down the hill. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for discretionary use permit to allow a wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment for commercial purposes on private property within the public right-of-way across the street from 797 Santa Margarita Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval and special conditions that the installation used design Option D and that the antenna support equipment and meter are 100% stealth screened to the satisfaction of the Development Director as per Municipal Code Chapter 10.30.020, the definition of a stealth mount and wireless communication facility in the open space zoning district. This concludes staff's presentation for this project.
Any questions for staff right now? No? Does the applicant want to come up?
Good evening and happy new year. My name is Mark Peters. I'm with the CBR Group. I don't have a presentation tonight. I just wanted to make a couple brief statements about what we've come back with tonight from our last meeting where we got feedback from you. That's what we took the direct feedback and revised our drawings and revised photo sims, and that's what's before you tonight. And I can answer any questions that you may have about that. A little bit more information, if Sam spoke of the meeting that we had in between that last Commission meeting and now with staff, where they proposed some lamp post designs. Verizon would certainly be interested in that. Currently, Verizon has no agreement to utilize the city's infrastructure, and once that was in place, that might be something we would consider. I know Verizon has made multiple attempts at that, and that's something we're considering. But for this project, the time, the timeline is just well outside of what we could utilize until an agreement like that's in place. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions for him right now?
Just a couple quick ones. Just, we'll do discussion later, but, so, just to clarify, so the examples of lamp post designs, these require an agreement with the city? Is that why you're saying that's what you're stating?
Yes, they would have to be on the city's, you know, existing, we could replace the city's existing infrastructure, but we need to go where there's a street light. Verizon is not in the business of owning and operating, you know, street or pedestrian lighting independent of a city. So the city would have to own the, the street light, and we do this with, Verizon does this with many other communities where they have agreements for that. And I know they've approached Millbrae. I don't know the current status of those negotiations with the city, but the city manager's office probably would have more information on that regard.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for providing, I've been asking for the frontal view for, ever since we started, so thank you for finally providing that. What is the width? I think it's, is it, am I right in reading it, that it's the 13 inches of that box that...
14, I believe.
14. Just, so, you had it up there, but the, the frontal view, that shroud, I guess that's a shroud?
Yeah, in, in the drawings, on page, my glasses on.
A5, I think.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Yes, A5 Detail 3. You'll see that the, the width is 14.7 inches.
Okay, and the pole there is, what is that?
I, I think, you know, the pole tapers. I would hazard a guess that the pole's around 10 or 11 inches at that elevation.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned in terms of the light post and not the agreement, you mentioned that there is some sense of urgency about this one? Is there a specific reason?
And not so much a sense of urgency, but I would say that in our experience with cities and getting a master license agreement to attach their light poles takes generally upwards of a year. So that, that's well outside of like the timeline that we're looking at right now for getting a project reviewed and approved by you guys.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Anybody else right now?
I have a quick question. So this agreement would be just for this particular, or this is for the master?
This would be a master agreement, utilize city infrastructure. That's what's typical with the other cities that we do.
Okay.
Again, I'm not the representative for, for Verizon for, you know, talking about all the details of those types of agreements. They're usually done independent of, of our process. We're aware of them. And then my company, for example, you know, we make applications based on those agreements in other communities, but it would not be, and I don't think Verizon would agree on a single location agreement for that. And I don't know if, if anybody, staff has anything to add to that.
I don't know if you're the person to ask, or staff, but if we're looking at this project on Santa Margarita, are we only looking at the one project or the master agreement that he's talking about?
Right, so, we're only talking about this particular site this evening. And if I could just give a little more context to the Commission as well. At that meeting that staff had with the applicant on December 19th, where we introduced this light post design, most of it was because of the fact that we've heard, you know, a number of comments from the community and the Commission certainly about aesthetic design. So as we start to learn about more technology, we wanted to make sure that they were aware to try to get some level of commitment moving forward on, on more sites. We weren't talking about any sort of master agreement on this site. We weren't talking about the use of city infrastructure on this site. So tonight, what's before you is only this particular site at 797 Margarita.
And it has nothing to do with the master agreement?
It has nothing to do with that, although that is something that I do believe the city may be interested in pursuing in the future. And I'll be talking more with the city manager about that, as well as the city attorney's office about what we are able to do for future sites.
As the applicant and representative for Verizon, I would encourage the city to discuss with Verizon, you know, an agreement to utilize those types of assets because it gives us more flexibility and more options with citing.
Anything else right now?
So I noticed during the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion or comments from the public about design guidelines or city cell tower design guidelines. Where are we with that in the development?
Right, so, at this time, we're, the city staff is starting to work on preparation of an ordinance in concert with the city attorney's office. Right now, the schedule is to try to have a draft of an ordinance here early part of this, of spring. So we, we would need to get a draft ordinance put together and do some outreach with the community, and then certainly bring the concepts for, to the Planning Commission for your consideration. So hopefully, early this spring is what we're, we're aiming for.
And for, I'm not sure if CBR is the right group to ask, but, you know, with the several applications from Verizon and potential other cell phone carriers, are we expecting to have a schedule for several additional one-by-one, or will they be submitted all at one time? Because if they're all submitted at one time, preferably, that would help us as a city get organized, have our guidelines, and then just ask them to submit after that time rather than one-by-one, and it takes up more city time and planning and meetings and our resources to have to go through these one-by-one.
Yeah, and thank you for the feedback. And one thought that we've had, and we'll have to explore whether or not we're able to do that within the ordinance, is to look to, see if there's a way to mandate that applications are batched together from a resource perspective so that we're not doing case by case by case. But, you know, we'll have to see if that's something that we're able to do within the ordinance. And I think our city attorney's is going to say something about that now.
So we do have some constraints in terms of the timing of, of processing these applications. I think the, there, because of various federal and state laws, the city has a certain amount of time to process each application. So to the extent that the applicants are willing to, to agree to submit applications, either to hold off until we're, we have our, our design guidelines in place, or to batch their applications, that we can, we can work towards a strategy, a strategy like that. But until we have our, until we actually have the, the design guidelines and the new ordinance in place, and even to agree afterwards, our, our ability to require applicants to submit in any particular way is limited.
Thank you. Anybody else right now? Okay, public comment. So far, I have two speaker slips. Thank you. Samar Noradine?
Hi, my name is Samar Noradine. I implore you to take these things into consideration before you, you, you let this go through. The value of properties located in the vicinity of the site will decrease if Verizon permit is approved. Home buyers are concerned about diminished aesthetics, noise nuisance, and potential health effects associated with cell transmitters, and will not purchase a home near a transmitter or will pay less for homes located near a cell transmitter. According to Realtor Magazine, a study found that 94% of home buyers would not purchase homes near a cell transmitter to, to health effects. While the city council arguably may not deny a permit based on health effects of the proposed wireless facility, the commissioner should take into account home buyers' perception, and I mean perception, of health effects from wireless facilities, and the direct impact these perceptions will have on property values of the persons located in the vicinity of this site. The existence of a smell, of a small cell transmitter on a homeowner's property is a fact that should be disclosed to potential home buyers. The California Association of Realtors requires homeowners to submit a transfer disclosure statement to disclose any facts that would affect the property value or use and enjoyment of the property for every real estate transaction. A cell transmitter located near a property would be an issue that should be disclosed to potential home buyers, both to ensure that the home buyers are made aware of the issue and to release the homeowner from any future liabilities. According to the SteelInTheAir.com, which represents private landowners, corporate property owners, and public entities in lease negotiation against wireless carriers and tower companies, once a small cell or DA's note is attached to a pole, the wireless carriers have the right under Section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act to expand their equipment. In other words, once a site is built, municipalities have little power to restrict further expansion of the pole's small cell antenna equipment if the applicant stays within the limits of 6409. Moreover, wireless companies can request to expand an unlimited number of times. So even if a small cell starts off looking small and svelte, it could be expanded in size immediately without the new municipality being able to stop the expansion. And this can happen over and over again. 5G cell towers do not work on their own.
Was there a timer going? Yeah, I'm sorry. Three minutes is up. Were you close to being finished?
I'm almost finished.
Yeah, another couple of lines?
Like a paragraph.
Okay.
Okay. Five cell towers do not work on their own. They are part of a large mesh network of small cell antennas that work together to provide service. This small cell site would only cover a five-foot radius, and a new cell sighting will be required every five feet or two to 10 homes. With multiple carriers competing for space, it is very well probable that Millbrae will have a small cell sighting on every electric pole. That is a huge aesthetic aberration to our beautiful environment in Millbrae. I have a lot to say, but I'm gonna have someone else finish it off for me, but you really need to consider this. This is not, this is not just this site. This is every cell tower in Millbrae, every, every pole in Millbrae we're talking about. You're not going to be able to spot stop it. This is Pandora's Box being opened. Okay? I'll have someone else finish it.
Hind Bu Solan? Solomon, sorry. No, your time is up. Your time is up. She can come up and speak, that's fine. How will she know?
She cannot read it. She needs her glasses. You gotta give me that time.
I wanna allow my time.
You do that all again.
All right, go ahead.
Under current state law, AB 57 Millbrae will not be allowed to deny other carriers from colocation on the same pole. The potential for decrease in aesthetics in this neighborhood is endless with the many carriers competing for cell coverage. There are many reports of small meters, cell towers, and other wireless microwave frequency emitters catching on fire. This is a safety hazard on a high-fire-risk neighborhood. What guarantee do we have that our neighborhood will not catch on fire due to a small cell catching fire? See, attach hundreds of, see, you could see hundreds of cases of cell towers and smart meters spontaneously catching on fire, and with some industries trying to cover it up. Furthermore, the recent fires should be a lesson to us that even the current electrical burdens on PG&E poles are causing catastrophic fires. Adding extra burden with small cells is not a very wise idea for Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, public comment is closed. Okay, we're ready for some discussion?
Through the chair, did we want to let the applicant address anything that was said, or if they want to? Whether it is we can ask questions?
I'm certainly capable of answering any specific questions you might have based on the public's comment. I, I would say that this is proposal tonight that we're talking about is, is this particular site. It's not for any other site. There's a process individually for each one of those other sites. Outside of that, she spoke a lot, and, and it would take me probably quite some time to address every single one of her points, but if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you want me to start?
Okay.
It's just something that caught my attention in her comment was catching fire.
So generally, our facilities don't pose any additional hazards. You hear a lot these days about PG&E and, and lines catching fire. Those are the electrical wires that cause that. There was a case in Malibu 12 years ago, prior to the establishment of a lot of the CPUC rules that we govern today, where there was a lot more equipment added to a pole than should have been added. There was not a structural analysis performed on it, and it caught, and it caused a fire in Malibu. And if you go on the internet, you will find some details about that. Other than that particular instance, I know of no single one in California or the United States that caused a fire. Certainly, there are a lot of implications of electrical lines causing fires across our state and in other states. But we don't see that there is any additional fire risk posed by our facility being on it. We do structural analysis to make sure it's not, and the amount of power that our facility uses is less than a blow dryer.
Thank you. This is more for staff that, since we're in discussion... This is more for staff that, since we're in discussion then. So I did have a question and I brought this up last time and I brought it up a little before the meeting with chair, so. Just in terms of precedence issue, any concerns regarding precedence, because this is one project, but if we do move, if we were to move forward with this, then are we setting up a precedent for ourselves that can come back later? So that's one question. A second question is the, one of, during the public comment, it was mentioned the possibility of people being, the company being able to come back and expand and change equipment and all of that. According to the conditions in here and requirements, it seems like that's not allowed, that it should be according to what is planned here and they're not just given a blank check, but I'd like to confirm that. And then third, are we setting a precedence in terms of any other carriers? Then other carriers can come in and say, hey, you know, you're allowing for this, you know, to happen with Verizon, you have to give us the same rider or whatnot. So those are the three questions that I would have. If you can address those, please.
So in terms of the precedential value of decision, there is, there is some precedential value. I think that the, the city has the most discretion in terms of regulating the visual impacts and the aesthetic impacts of the, of the decision. I think to remind the commission, we are constrained by a number of state and federal laws in terms of how we can regulate the use of, or the presence of small cell facilities in the public right of way. And our primary, our, our primary ability is to, is to regulate aesthetics. One of the findings that, that we need to make for a use permit is that there is no significant visual impacts. And so if we were to approve this application and the applicant were to come back with another similar application and we would want to deny that one, we would have to be able to somehow distinguish why this one was permissible and that one wasn't. One of the ways that we can do that is to, is to explain very carefully why and very thoroughly in our findings, why we believe that this particular design and this particular proposal is appropriate for this particular site. And there, there are specific findings that we can make, and the more facts specifically make our findings, the more individualized the, the grant is and the greater ability we have to distinguish in a future application. So we have, so staff in preparing the proposed resolution has noted a number of facts that we believe are significant about this application that make it, that, that make the visual impacts particularly modest. And we, if the commission in its deliberation determines that there are other factors that, that are important in, in making the finding that there are no visual impacts, the commission can supplement the findings or edit the findings in the proposed resolution and we can, and we can prepare an amended resolution for the commission's adoption. I would like also to, to note that our ability to consider radio frequency emissions is limited specifically by federal law. That includes not only the, the amount of the emissions, so long as they comply with federal, with the federal regulations, but also the, the secondary effects such as the effects on property values and the effects and health impacts. So our, again, our ability to consider radio frequency impacts are fairly limited. So in terms of your question about expansion and colocation on this facility, there, there is a state law that, that makes it easier to co-locate additional wireless equipment on a, on a base station. And by, by permitting a, a telecommunications equipment onto this utility pole, it does become a base station. There are, there are limits to the, the ability to further expand the use of this, of this pole for, for additional small cell equipment. For example, if there are structural reasons why we can't, we can't put another small cell facility on this, on this pole, we would be able to deny it for that reason. We would also be able to deny if it would defeat the existing concealment elements of the tower and would not, would not comply with the pre-existing conditions associated with the prior approvals of construction or modification of the tower or base station, including permit conditions, building codes and other non-discretionary structural and safety codes.
Okay, so just to boil it down, so if, if this were to be approved, then they don't have just a carte blanche to be able to just say, okay, now we can do anything, we can change it up, we can make it less stealth, we can add more power, it's not, that is specifically in here, right, in our conditions of approval?
The effects of the approval would, would make it easier to add more small cell facilities or more telecommunications equipment onto this particular pole, but that ability, it's not a blank check, it is still constrained by things like building codes, the, the structural ability of the pole to support more equipment and also the aesthetic impacts, we do have some degree to regulate. We have less once there, once there's already equipment on the pole, but we, it is not a blank check.
But they wouldn't necessarily come back to planning commission if they were to change it?
I believe they would have to come back to the planning commission.
Right, so I can just answer that on page 13 of the resolution, I'm sorry, of the conditions of approval, under special condition A, there, it talks about when there are deviations from the approved plans and any significant changes would then be subject to coming back to the planning commission for review and approval.
And so the law that was brought up earlier that said that it would make it easy to just go ahead and change it, is that, that doesn't supersede this or that doesn't keep, limit us from being able to say this?
Sorry.
Is that, is that true?
So I'm, I'm looking for the, the specific site.
Okay.
I will.
That would be good to know because it's nice to be able to write it, make sure that we have it in our special conditions, but if we find out later that the law says we can't, you know, can't limit it, then that's, that's an issue.
I, I know you have a preference to have your staff answer that question, but if I could add a little, maybe a little context for, for your help. So from our perspective on 6409, the thing that becomes important, and we do use that to upgrade facilities, it really was not designed, that legislation for small, to address small cells, really for much larger facilities where you may be adding small pieces of equipment and it resides on whether it's a substantial change or not. In the case of this particular facility, it would come down to the, what your city attorney mentioned about defeating the existing concealment. So you're approving a shroud design on here, 6409 would allow us to make modifications inside of that shroud, but not to add to that shroud or not increase its size or span. So if we were to replace the radio, like there's a new radio later and it stays within the existing concealment, we could do that under 6409, but, but it wouldn't necessarily give us rights to add bunches of equipment to the pole.
Thank you. Is that consistent with what you have?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
If I can have the applicant. What is the minimal, what is the minimal distance between your proposed location of installation to the nearest residential property, structure-wise?
You mean, what is the distance?
The distance, yes. How far is it away from the house closest to you?
I believe we talked about some distances last time, I think it's somewhere around.
I don't remember the exact number, you, I don't think you gave a number last time.
Yeah, I don't know, to be perfectly honest, I may have to apologize, I don't have that specific information. It's across the street.
Yes.
And it's probably on the order of 70 to 100 feet away, depending on where you want to measure it to the building. I mean, the pole is about 10 feet back from, from the curb, the street's about 30 feet wide and there's a front yard to a house, it's probably 15, 20 foot setback would be my top of my head guess.
Guess estimate's about 70?
Yes. You want to look it up on Google? I have my associate looking it up on Google Earth right now.
I remember seeing, because I, when I reviewed the plan, I didn't see that, you know.
That was a request, you're correct, and I apologize, it was a request that you made that wasn't addressed, but if you give us just a moment, she's looking it up on Google Earth right now and she's gonna measure it.
Yeah, and then the second question I do have is that, you know, when I saw the plan, you're adding a certain amount of length to the pole on the top?
Yes, the safety extension, correct.
Right, and then so what structural analysis have you done, if you have done any, how do you know and for sure, how do you ensure that this is gonna be a structurally sound design, given the extra weight that is gonna be put on and the deflection that it might take, given how long, how long it is going to be now in the proposal and wind load and all the other stuff, given how much weight you put on that particular part of the extension?
We use, for one, we employ registered professional civil engineers in my company, we actually have three. They use a program called OCal Pro, it's the industry standard across the United States, and it's specifically designed for utility poles and it takes into account all the, the weight loads on the pole, all the wind loading on the pole, also takes into account the lines that are attached to the pole, guy wires on the pole, class of pole, embedment of pole and, and probably a lot more factors that are more engineering specific that I can talk to. So we perform the structural analysis on the pole and it passes within industry standards. Also, because we're going on a PG&E pole top, PG&E as a utility, self-regulating utility under California Public Utility Commission will perform its own analysis and so it's, it's done twice on all these facilities. And through your building department and/or public works department can certainly and do generally require those to be provided as part of the permitting process and we of course would supply that.
And you would also take into the account the age of the pole that is currently being proposed?
Yes, age of the pole is part, there's a condition part that goes into the, the calculations. Well, we have the pole tested, what's called a test and treat. There's a requirement through CPUC that every 10 years, poles are evaluated, tested and or, and treated for, you know, wood destroying organisms and pests. And then we, we order one of those reports and that's part of the inputs into the structural analysis.
And just a question for staff, that our building department, as part of the CSG review, they will review the structural analysis of it?
Yes.
If we can get the distance, that'll be great.
80 feet, it's pretty close on my guess.
80?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you also explain what the six-foot extension is? Why can't the antenna just sit on top of the pole? What is the safety?
It's a PG&E rule and, and it's a CPUC rule under General Order 95, rule, I can't remember the exact rule number, but that the bottom of the antenna bracket must be six feet away from power. This is pretty typical on, for, to take a step back, I will say that a utility pole is sectioned off into certain areas and there's the zero to seven feet, which is an unusable area, from seven feet to 18 feet is what's called the substructure of the pole. Two feet above that is where the comm space starts and the comm space extends up to six feet under wherever the power lines are. So there's a safety clearance there that like the fiber and telco lines and Comcast lines that are attached to the pole have to be six feet below power. And for anything that's on the top of the pole, it must be six feet above the power lines. It's a safety standard by both the CPUC and PG&E and we have to keep, keep that space.
Any more questions for him right now? Okay, thank you for now. Discussion? Who wants to start?
You know, my biggest concern is that we don't have an ordinance in front of us and it just seems that we're on the cutting edge here at the beginning and I know everyone wants to be first. So I guess I'm kind of torn about being the first one to say, go ahead and, and do it and then find out we're not doing the best thing possible for the community. If we had an ordinance, then we would be, someone would have done the research for us and, you know, I'm just kind of torn. I'm kind of anxious to see what everyone else has to say, but minus an ordinance and the objection and waiting for the wireless and I'm thinking, maybe we should wait a little while longer, but I've, nothing concrete in my little brain, just a lot of ifs and buts.
Through the chair.
I just, I just want to clarify, you know, the city, we do have an ordinance, it's just that it has not been updated in some time to include the design standards that we've been talking about. So I just wanted to be clear that we do have an existing ordinance.
Right, but I mean, the point is that it doesn't do to have an, an ordinance that's so outdated that it doesn't reflect what we're trying to do now. So when you're saying we're gonna be coming up with an ordinance or, or creating an update to the ordinance and you're talking about springtime and I'm thinking, as quickly as time has gone by, you know, I'm just not sure if we ought to jump into it.
So through the chair, I would also like to add that the, as I mentioned before, we do have time constraints on how long we can, on the time period in which we must make a decision either to approve or deny an application relating to a wireless communication facility. This application was submitted, I believe, over a year ago and we've gotten a number of extensions from Verizon. I believe our most recent extension is the end of the month, the shot clock?
I think it is this month.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's the, it's within the next few weeks. So if Verizon is willing to continue to extend the, the shot clock to allow us to complete the ordinance and to, to evaluate their application under that, that new ordinance, we could potentially do that, but if Verizon is not willing to continue to extend the shot clock, they, we would have to make a decision either yea or nay on the application as is under the existing law, otherwise it would be deemed approved.
January what, 19 you said?
You didn't have an exact date, just toward the end of the month?
I believe it is this month, towards the end of the month.
23rd. Thank you, 23rd.
So I can see there's a lot of, you know, public concern about the cell tower sites and the visual impacts and impacts on health and aesthetics of their neighborhoods. It's not an easy issue to address. And a lot of the research states that the, like World Health Organization and CDC, they have given guidance for FCC for design standards to minimize exposure and the radiation caused by these cell tower, base tower sites is on the order of, it's like energy that introduces more radiation in terms of like heat and transfer to a person's body, which is very small according to the, you know, WHO and CDC reports that I've read. And I know, we know that Verizon, they've done a lot of due diligence, they've held open houses and they've had experts come in and, you know, they have resources. We know that, I know Verizon is very responsive carrier. When I had cellphone service, they have very good customer service, they do their due diligence repairs under a top-rate organization. For this issue about the cell sites, I know that they would need to, for the city to approve one site to get an idea of what we're looking for in terms of design for these towers. They don't want to, probably don't want to have, you know, several designs like this for, I don't know, 20 different sites and then have us, have, have them comment and have them rewrite the entire design package for 20 sites. Could be that they're trying to pass the one site first, see what we want and then go on to the next, but I think preferably for a project like this, we'd want to see more of an overall, I guess, plan and package so that it'd be beneficial for the city if they just submitted an overall plan with the proposed sites and then a generic drawing like this that could say, you know, this, this is the same design that would go in at the different sites and then the specific sighting and so forth could be finished off, you know, after the general drawings. general drawings. That way, we're looking at an agreement so that, we'd like to have an agreement with them so that, you know, there's like the time lease agreement for operations and evaluation of their facilities and then renewal of the projects. So I know that in the operating agreement here, there's somewhere specified like five years conditional use permit, and then other places it says, I believe there's like 10-year. So with each of the cell towers, when they're installed, if we were to approve them one by one, then we have to go again through the same process, reviewing each package one by one, approving one by one. They get constructed one by one, the inspectors go out and review the construction and design and takes up city resources, but if we were all, if they had a master plan and then they were all approved in one lot, this is just a proposal, then they could all be approved, and then everybody in the different neighborhoods could be here giving their input. I know that might be a big challenge for Verizon to have all the neighborhoods here giving their input, because then there'd be like six times as many people in the audience. But then that would give us a chance to hear everybody's feedback, try to incorporate everybody's and have parity for every one of these sites and approve them all at one time, and then also have an operating agreement so that all the sites are installed quickly and the inspectors can review them in batch, you know, very quickly. Make sure, you know, there's issues about, if people have concerns, if they're going to have designs like this and then build something else. So if we had them all constructed at the same time, then the inspectors could go out and just make sure that they're all constructed and installed according to the designs at one time and that they're operated, and that the lease agreements are all subject to expiration and renewal at the same time, too, rather than, you know, six months, you know. At that point, the city inspectors or the city may forget about these times of the leases, but if there's like one date where entire plan and all the sites expire, then they know that they want to renew the lease. We can go out to all the sites and just check on them and see if there's any other conditions or if they're maintained well, and we can re-approve of these cellphone sites. You know, there's a lot more benefits to the city if we were to, well, there would be some benefits to the city if we were to approve them in batch and construct it in batch rather than one by one, so.
I have some things to say to that, or maybe you should respond to that. I just want to make sure we're always, we often use words casually. These are antennas, these are not cell towers. I just want to say that out loud one more time. Each of these projects is unique. We can't do a sweeping, oh, you're all, they're all good. We can't. Each one, each address, each location is its own project, correct? They've already given us, we had four to start with, and it's been peeled back to this. They've already taken back some of their applications and other ones that were halfway through the process, as I understand it. So they are trying to give those to us in lumps, but each project is its own thing. So we can't, this is on a PG&E pole. The next one, if we come up with a plan, let's say, to lease our city spaces, the next one could be on a city light pole. Another one could be on private property somewhere else on a different kind of facility. You can't just say, well, this PG&E pole works, but another one may not work, it may not be structurally sound. So you can't really, I don't think, approve these things in batches of 20, say. I don't think that works, just even the way, how are we going to approve 20 of these at one time? We've been working with this one since April. I just, I'm struggling with that, so that's why, and I think you earlier said, we can't, the staff can only do so much at any given time. I mean, help me here.
So, I believe we, well, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think you're right. I mean, as the city attorney was saying earlier tonight in the findings of approval, you know, we have looked at this site, the very specific circumstances that, look at that site location, the vegetation, the slope, all those types of things. So you're right, each site would be a bit different. I think the question could be is that if we were talking about just, let's say, for instance, city facilities only, then maybe we could bring some together if there was a continuity in the design and the look and the feel. That's one issue, but you, what you pointed out is absolutely correct. If you have one that's on a PG&E site, if one's on private property, if one's on city property, each one of those would have to be evaluated on their own, on their own merit.
I think that is how we retain the greatest amount of discretion over and control over the aesthetics, is to treat each one as an individualized application. I would also like to remind the commission that we cannot, we cannot base any of our findings on radio frequency emissions.
Say a few words. It's not likely to be aesthetically pleasing, you know, to put a big block of equipment outside a power pole such as this. I mean, we can shroud it, we can camouflage it, but it's not likely to be a very appealing thing to put on. Perhaps in the future, that could be out of possibility, you guys could consider maybe put them underground, you know, put them like a transformer box, like outside a PG&E transformer on a sidewalk. There are other things that could be done to make it a little bit more pleasing, and I'm sure that, you know, as time goes on, you will find better technology to be able to do that. But we, as the planning commission, we're chartered to represent the people of Millbrae. And I think one thing that particularly troubles me a little bit in consideration of these projects in general is that the application would deem complete in October, two years ago, 2017. The first hearing date was April 2nd. So from then until now, you know, you had a number of outreach that you guys done, a neighborhood meeting, and I appreciate that. And from a technical presentation perspective, you guys came a long way, you know, produced a lot of technical information to us, you guys have been as, as easy to work with as it possibly can for a cellphone carrier-wise. You know, we asked for things you provided and then updated the technical information, and we appreciate that. But throughout the last, what is it, now January, so about nine months since the first hearing date, and with the amount of outreach that you guys have done, I still have yet to hear a neighbor come up to the podium and said, I would support this project. And that's one thing that sort of makes it very difficult for me to support it, given that we also have a duty to look out for the interests of the public and represent the public, and yet the public clearly have not given us an indication that they wanted to support it, and that's the difficult part for me. So, and I understand that you guys have peeled back on some of the other applications that is located in a residential zoning, where this one is an open space, and yet it's surrounded by low-density residential and quite a bit far away from the rest of the other residents, and heavily screened by dense trees and all the others. But, you know, it's, it's, it would be nice to have a few neighbors come up to the podium and said, yeah, I think it's okay. Yeah, I'd like you to respond to that if you can.
I would like to respond to that, and it's been quite a while since we've brought this up, but we did perform, you know, oftentimes-
Text campaign, I remember that.
The text campaign, and it helps to illustrate where there sometimes is a silent majority or a silent group of people who are in favor of the projects but don't take the time out because they're not opposed to them. I'm sure as commissioners, you see this quite often where, you know, people, you know, who have negative reactions to things generally are more passionate than those who are like, yeah, that's a good idea, I like that. In reading from the text campaign that we did some time ago, we received 122 affirmative text messages and no opposed residents. Of course, this is Verizon customers, but Verizon customers do live in your community, and there are people who do want best-in-class service from Verizon and the best possible wireless experience, and I think they're reflected in the text campaign. So I think there is some positive support in the community for these.
Right, and I think we already had that discussion at the first hearing, right?
Correct, it was some time ago.
Do you still have that text campaign in front of you?
Yes, I do.
If you mind reading that out?
Yes, I can read it out. "To whom it may concern, I am the Verizon Wireless Marketing Director over the team that maintains and manages all data and information messages that are sent to Verizon Wireless customers in California. In connection with the application referred above, Verizon Wireless arranged for a text message to be sent to customers with billing addresses within the ZIP code 94030 in Millbrae. The entire text message sent reads as follows. Free Verizon message. Reply yes to this text to show your support for improved Verizon Wireless service in Millbrae. Add a message to tell the city that you support small cell facilities on streetlights and utility poles. Include your email address for updates. The text message above was sent on March 26, 2018. As of March 30, 2018, we have received 122 affirmative text message responses indicating support for the proposed facilities and no respondents opposed. Text messages received confirm the need to provide improved Verizon Wireless service in Millbrae. Samples of the text messages of support received from Verizon Wireless customers appear in the attached pages. I am available to verify information as you may require. Sincerely, Jerry McCartney." And then there is about 20 or 30 samples of some of the text messages responding back. Full support, and you can put one of the light poles in front of my house. Millbrae pre-supports small cell facilities on streetlights for Verizon service. This should also bring in some revenue from Millbrae. We support small cell facilities on streetlights and utility poles for better and faster coverage. Yes, I do support Verizon bringing something on top of a light post to improve the service. Yes, I support small cell facilities on utility light poles. Yes, I do support the addition of cell facilities on streetlights and utility poles. Yes, anything to better wireless service and reception. Yes, I think will make the communication even faster and also will open a door for the next generation of signal like 5G. Yes, we support small cell facilities. Yes, it is much-
Sorry, that's a-
Okay, I just wanted to read the whole text of the-
They're all going to be the same, I appreciate it.
I texted those answers.
Those were answers that people texted back in response. So there are people who are in support of it who may, didn't feel the need to come to the council chambers and spend their, their sixth evening, you know, showing their support.
You know, when I, when I was reading, when I was listening to text campaign, sort of debbie the text campaign-
Yes.
-that you sent it out, I don't recall hearing a way for them to voice opposition to the campaign.
The purpose of the text campaign is to find the positive support in the community.
And I get that.
The negative support has found their way here.
Well, I think, you know, people are fair in general. I mean, constituents are highly educated, they're highly sophisticated people. If there are people who are genuinely in support of your campaign and your proposal, and if, and they're passionate about it, and it's not going to be difficult for you to find one or two of them who is willing to come up to the podium and speak about it.
In other text message campaigns that we've done, we've gotten negative respondents, where they text no back, or they have a negative comment that they text back. In this case, there wasn't. I don't have them, I could probably dig them out of our files, but we can show you the ones we've done in Sunnyvale, Sonoma, et cetera, that, that do have negative respondents to them.
That would be irrelevant to-
It would be irrelevant to these proceedings, yes.
Yes, so, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome, thank you for letting me speak.
So I think that's kind of what I'm torn apart by. I would love to hear one or two neighbor come up to the podium who lives here and said, yeah, I'm all for it. I would love to hear it, but I haven't heard any. That's my comment.
So if we do nothing, it's going to automatically go through?
According to the law.
According to the law.
According to the shot clock law, right?
Yeah.
And that's correct unless the-
Unless there's a proposal to reject.
Yeah.
Which can be appealed.
I mean, this one is kind of an open space, but it really isn't, because there's people right across the street and right next door to it. So, I mean, when I think of open space, I think of big open space, so, I don't know. Let's, I, we have been looking at this forever. They have done a better job of showing what the equipment is going to look like. By us waiting, we did get more wireless antenna than we had before, so the system is getting better than when, if I'm not mistaken, of when it was first come before us, but... Well, we're going to have to make a decision here, guys. I'm tired of this.
I'm just waiting. A couple things, I think, one, as other commissioners have mentioned, it is a tricky subject, just because overall, and, you know, we know that, we've been seeing that in neighboring cities. One thing I would say is, I think we need to be careful about making decisions based on public comment. I treasure public comment, I think we need to hear it, but at the same time, I think we need to be careful, because we're not elected officials, we're here to make decisions based on what we think is best, you know, best for the city based on the ordinances, the policies, the, everything that we have in place, and we need to make those decisions. And I would just be a little careful, because not everybody can make it out to the podium, not everybody, you know, responds to a text message. I didn't get a text message from Verizon, and I'm in the same ZIP code, and I never got one, so, you know, trying to go back and forth between what's more popular with the public or not, I think we need to be very careful about that. So I wouldn't, I personally don't think it's a good thing to base a decision purely on that, not purely on that, but on that, at the same time, of course, we should take every public comment to heart and, you know, examine as much as we can. So, you know, I'm not saying that I wouldn't consider it valuable, I just, and that's why we have a public comment time, but at the same time, I think, I would kind of caution against, you know, making a decision based on what comments that we do hear, because there could be a lot more negative comments, there could be a lot of positive comments, and just based on what we're seeing here, I don't think that's the best way to make a decision. Having said that, I think what's making it more uncomfortable for all of us is commissioners, or at least for me personally, and what I'm hearing from other commissioners as well, is that we don't have our ordinance in place, we don't have a comprehensive plan from Verizon, which is something that we asked for from the very beginning. We don't, and not having that in place, it's hard to just say, okay, we'll be okay with this one until we're ready, but I don't know if we were to have a, if we were to deny a project based on the fact that we don't, I don't think that we can deny a project based on the fact that we don't have an ordinance in place, right? That's-
So we would need to make findings based on the, is it five, four?
Finding, we'd make a decision based on the findings.
Yes, so if we deny the project, we need to have a basis, and that basis should track one of the, that it didn't meet one of the findings.
Right, so, so we wouldn't be able to say, well, we, we're going to deny this because we don't have something in place. The fact that we don't have something in place is bad. It's something that, I mean, we've had this before us for a long time, but we've also had a lot of stuff going on in our city, so, you know, I think having the ordinance in place, having a master plan, all of that, you know, that would be ideal, but I'm, I don't see how denying based, I don't think we can deny based on that, obviously. So we're kind of confronted with, we have the findings here, is that?
The findings are in the staff report and also in the, in the proposed resolution.
And that we can't go on beyond that, is what I'm hearing. As hard as it is, so, I mean-
So I believe the commission's role in this proceeding, from a legal perspective, is to determine, as the finders of fact, whether or not these findings can be made, whether or not there is an alternative site that is available that would allow for the issuance of an administrative permit for the facility, whether the facility either does not require an RF environmental evaluation report, or the RF environmental evaluation report for this facility shows the cumulative NEIR emitted by the facility and any nearby facilities will be consistent with the FCC regulations, and whether or not the facility will have, and whether the facility will not have significant visual impacts. And then also whether the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use, under the circumstances of the particular case, will be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use, and whether the establish, establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use, in the particular case, can be detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood of such proposed use. So those are the five findings that the commission needs to make, the commission needs to determine whether or not it can make. We, the staff has recommended that this project meets all of those five findings. If the commission determines that one or more of the findings is deficient, then we would encourage the commission to explain how the project does not meet that finding, and we will draft findings, revise the findings to reflect the commission's decision.
Thank you.
At the beginning of the meeting, they mentioned that there was a potential alternative site just north. There was a light post that might potentially be used as an alternate site. I know that having it on the corner, in an intersection, there's a lot more traffic, and it's right across from the neighbors. and it's right across from the neighbors, and it has a lot more visual impact. But that whole block across the street from the schoolyard, there's no residences and it's more enclosed or obscured from, by the trees. There's just the green belt there, in the middle of the green belt. So what was the reason given that that light post cannot be used as an alternate site?
Yeah.
Quite simply, we don't have permission or a legal right to go on that structure. It belongs to the city of Millbrae. It's not available to us at this time.
Through the chair, the location, that, it's a streetlight pole, it's a city-owned streetlight pole. There weren't any other, you know, reasons why that particular site wouldn't be a feasible site as far as like the equipment or the type of pole or the equipment located on the pole, but that master agreement hasn't been developed yet for that site.
And is it an option if that is an open space? I mean, that's a fairly large site that they could have, a city could have an agreement just to place a pole there if Verizon made the request to stick a pole there?
Yeah, so staff did visit that site, and the location is, you know, is a sort of, is an ideal site for like a test site for the streetlight pole design option. And, you know, that's something that the applicant is, you know, interested in looking at for future sites, but at this time, there's no agreement in place right now at this time to use that pole?
And there may never be an agreement in place. From my perspective, the city of Verizon may never come to agreement to utilize that. So if you were to suggest, make a motion to approve it at that location, you would be effectively prohibiting me because I have no way of going on that location because you're the landlord.
So we're just evaluating potential alternative siting options and possibilities?
We provided alternative sites in our analysis, and we feel that this location is a well-sited facility. It's better than all the other alternatives that we provided. It's screened by the tree. Staff feels that it meets the finding for, you know, not creating adverse visual impact or a significant visual impact. So we think we have a well-sited site, we've pared it down to the absolute minimum of equipment for a site to work for Verizon. And if there were better alternatives, I believe me, I would have long since pursued it.
I just keep thinking that for the new system to work properly, you're going to need more than one.
One will provide benefit where it is.
Exactly.
It works in an ideal situation with a mesh of other sites. As far as our master plan, Commissioner Joe has brought up before, we have applications in on every facility that Verizon has any plan today to ever pursue. Not saying that won't change in the future because we're, by the very nature of it, a front-edge technology industry, so that might change, but today, everything that Verizon has planned for Millbrae is submitted to your city now.
Everything is submitted, we've just got this one to decide on.
Yes, and to some comments about lumping them together, you know, we had four together at the, really at the direction of staff from the very beginning going, I think, long before even some of the staff members were here in Millbrae. And the problem that you have when you group things together is we get dragged down to the lowest common denominator, and then we're talking about probably, you know, you know, we get measured against the least desirable location. And so we actually withdrew those applications and pulled back our Verizon's rights so that we could focus on what we thought was the best location and see if we can make, you know, an acceptable site work in Millbrae in front of your commission, and we believe that we've done that.
But once again, it just seems like, it's like you're trying to get one approved to open up the door for everything else that's already in the pipeline because you've already submitted it. So it's like this is like, like-
If I could just get one approved and get automatic approvals on all the others, sure, I would do that.
Well, they're not going to automatically be approved, but it's certainly going to be a step in the right direction.
Well, of course it is, and that's sort of the reason why we want to find common ground to start with with Millbrae. But it doesn't mean, I mean, you're still going to review and have comment and have discretion over every one of our applications unless you write a new ordinance that says that you don't.
I don't, not, I don't have a sense of suspicion. I'm not going to assume that you're going to get one, you're foot in the door and you're just going to run us over after that. I don't have that sense. No, no, I don't have that sense. And partly it's because you have extended the shot clock how many times? You have pulled back your applications so that we can step back and get a bigger plan in place? And it sounds to me like those won't come back until we probably have an ordinance in place and they can be looked at with an ordinance.
That's correct.
So I don't, I don't have that sense of suspicion. I just want to say I don't have that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question in terms of, we don't have, we don't have control over when an applicant submits their projects, right?
No, we do not.
So we don't have, we don't know that we will, I mean, we don't know how long it's going to take us to get an ordinance in place because it's going to have to be drafted by staff, it's going to have to come here, might have to come here again, have to go through city council. I mean, so we're looking at a while and we don't know how long it's going to be. So I think we need to be, tread carefully when it comes to, assuming that when everything else comes up, we'll already have an ordinance in place. Or we could, I don't know. I wish we could say we're not going to do anything until we get an ordinance. I mean, you know, just advanced warning, we're going to be-
Absolutely. On the flip side, though, we also, if we say we're going to wait for it, it could be another year away.
And from my perspective, I mean, unless you could tell me there's a date certain that you will have a new ordinance completed by, I can't really make a commitment. If you don't know how long it's going to take you to draft a new ordinance, I would encourage you to be expeditious towards it. You know, we would also like to be in the process and have comment on it.
Well, one thing I would say, and I think we've known this, and that's why this project is before us, is because it is an open space. Yes, it is close to residential zone, and that's why it's come before us. If it wasn't, it would already have been just approved. So, you know, so with that, and then the way that this is looking to me, I think if we're going to approve anything, I would be more inclined to be okay with this one and make it very, very, very clear that this is not to set a precedence to say that everything else is okay and not, you know, everything will, changes are not okay, you know, lumping on a bunch is not okay, and that's what I'm being told is true. And that, you know, maybe CBR Group and others, although we can't control when you put an application in, to know that we're not going to be inclined to cooperate until we have something more comprehensive in place, in ordinance in place. I don't know how much teeth that has, but, I mean, in terms of sites, I think this is probably the one site where it might be acceptable, and maybe it might make sense to be okay. And I, you know, respect whatever the commissioners think, I'm going to leave it to everybody, but I feel like this might be the one site where it's okay, and it might be good to have a site where we see what it actually looks like, and, you know, you know, then to make it more concrete. So, that's kind of, I know, it's not the, yeah, it's a tough one to say, but I would say that's-
I would-
That's what I would go.
I don't think, if you look at the findings, that we can disagree with them. I know I can't, I can't find an argument against any of them. When I read the conditions of approval, you know, this one is probably the most important. Any proposed deviation from the planning commission approved plans and exhibits shall be shown to city staff for determination of significance. All such deviations will be deemed significant by city staff, shall be reviewed and reviewed by the planning commission and reflected. I mean, if they try to change anything, they've got to come back to the staff. If the staff says, "Oh, my gosh, you can't do that, you're taking it back to the planning commission." There's, there are things in place, they can't be willy-nilly. If they ever step outside of these agreements, we can pull up a permit from them immediately, within 90 days, it'll be gone. So, I mean, we, that's what this is, so I'm not worried about that. We've been told by our city attorney that this is a unique project and each project will be unique. So just because we said it was okay on this PG&E pole, surrounded by trees, doesn't mean that the next one, even if it is surrounded by trees on a PG&E pole, will be acceptable. It might not be. Each project will be unique, as I understand it, right? So if there's a reason why the next one doesn't look like this one, we'll be able to explain that. So I feel comfortable.
I think what we don't want is our residential neighborhoods to look like industrial complexes or commercial facilities, to look like it's, there's manufacturing right next to your home and having, if you were to have some of these pictures on the net about these cell towers, they have multiple antennas and arms sticking out.
They're smaller. One more time, this is not a tower.
They look very industrial.
It's an antenna.
They're much smaller.
And the likelihood that much more could be put on this one pole is slim.
Right. So that's the goal that we have, is to keep our residential neighborhoods residential and aesthetically looking. The fact that this antenna is not directly in front of a house, but it is in city property in open space, says a lot towards the planning as well as the compromises that they've made for, you know, trying to make it more stealth and features that more blend in with that, the trees and the surrounding environment there. And in addition to that, there's many conditions that are cited in the planning documents here that says that, for example, number two, general requirements, no significant changes or modifications shall be made to the facility without prior review and written approval by the community development director. Discretionary use permit and all rights hereunder shall be valid for five years from the date of approval. It needs to be re-approved after that. The approval shall become invalid if the wireless communication facility ceases to operate under the terms or conditions specified under this permit. If the company ceases to use that facility, the equipment should be removed from the facility location within 90 days and failure to comply with any terms and the conditions of this permit, including all these drawings which we approve. If they're designed or constructed not according to these plans, then it says that that shall be cause for further enforcement action, subject to the issuance of citation and/or revocation and termination of all rights thereunder by the city of Millbrae. So there are a lot of provisions that if people are afraid that something's built that wasn't designed and agreed to by the city, there's many provisions in here that there'd be potential citations and recalling of the permit. So it looks like the staff did a good job having these conditions and having the best interests of the city in case any unforeseen activities or construction were to be completed. And then it puts it in the case of the city and the inspectors and city staff to make sure that it all gets built according as agreed upon to, and operated as agreed upon also. So if there's any conditions where the pole's leaning over or we see there's some structural impact or defect, then the cell antenna is hanging over and there's suspected issues about radiation or potential, then we have the teeth that the city can go after them and ask Verizon to clean it up.
You know, it is somewhat an open space, but the people across the street are looking at it just the same as anybody else that was in the other four permits. They're sitting there looking at it.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't think many people are standing there looking at it, but I get what you're saying, just kind of visualizing somebody sitting there and staring at the pole.
Everyone's saying it's open space, but it really isn't.
Yeah, I know, I get it, I'm sorry.
It's in the open space zoning district. That is where the property sits, it's not-
Right.
Single family, it's open space, that's what that is.
Yeah, it's not that-
There's only like a couple of houses across the street, and the box is turned toward the school yard, so, and it's not in somebody's front yard. The other ones, the other poles were actually on, on the people's property in front of somebody's house. This is across the street, to the closest people.
And I believe if we were to have design guidelines for cell towers, I'm not sure what else could be approved, improved upon, that they would have certain requirements to be met other than what there is now. It's not directly in front of someone's property.
It's not a cell tower.
Antenna.
We have to keep saying it's not a-
It's kind of important. I know it's just words and casual, but it's-
We're so used to saying cell tower.
It's a small cell antenna, not a tower.
Just a question in terms of the finding, where am I? The findings about the visual impacts, there's something here that says it's separated from the nearest residence by approximately 35 feet, page 10. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so I think we'll correct that. What that was is a measurement that was approximate to the property line of the residence across the street, not to the structure. So I think we've heard that it's more like about 80 feet, so we'll go ahead and correct that within the finding.
How can it be 80 feet?
From the, from the actual pole to the house across the street.
So they have a 45-foot setback, is what you're saying roughly?
No, there's not a 45-foot setback. I mean, we're talking about semantics here, but-
We can get a scale on that directly, but the point is, is that from the facility, from the pole, the street width is approximately 30 feet, and they're doing it scaled from a drawing off of Google from the pole to the, from the structure, showing 80 feet.
And the sidewalk. No, I know exactly where it is.
It's just from the closest point around the house.
Yeah, the, from there to-
That's the closest point of the house.
I think they need the mic.
Microphones if we're going to be talking.
The tree is on the backside of the pole compared to the house where they're measuring it from, but the house has, the house, the house across the street where they're measuring the pole from, from which is measured at 80 feet, has a direct visual connection to that pole. Not screened. Thank you. I think part of our findings here on page 10, number C, is that in order for us to approve it, is that we have to find sufficient finding to justify that this facility being proposed will not have significant visual impact. That's an important finding. Having a box seven feet off the ground, gobble of metal metallic equipment on a utility pole that doesn't use to have anything on it at that size level, to call it without significant visual impact, I think it'll be a stretch to make that argument. I do understand that CBR has done a good job in trying to minimize the amount of equipment. You do the best you can, right? You put the least amount of equipment possibly needed, right, for, in order for this to technically work, right, from a equipment installations and- this to technically work, right, from a equipment installations and, and the size of it, the heights of it, the location where it is, you did the best you can possibly do, given what you have available to you from a technology perspective. But we have to understand and we have to make a decision whether or not this is good enough for us. And this is something we need to all consider, whether or not this is good enough, given what we see, or can it be even better? And that's the finding we have to make. Do I think it could be better? I think possibly. I don't know if we heard all the possibility that could possibly go into this. So, we all have to consider that in order to make this finding.
Well, the two possibilities are to allow another pole near the light posts further north, so it's more obscured from the nearby houses. But then, as noted, that there needs to be agreement with the city on that and it would take more time and there's no guarantee about that going through. There's also another option that I've seen other cities have low-ground vaults to house their equipments and there's potential for that box to be placed underground, but the other articles I've read noted that sometimes it's cost prohibitive to put in a vault and put the equipment in, in the ground. This one be a little bit more ideal because it is open space and so there's probably, it's not someone's property that they'd have to encroach upon and, and install a vault in the ground. It would be the city's property. But those are the two potential alternatives. Not sure if CBR wants to comment on that last one.
You know, in your comment about underground vaults, cost is not the reason why they're not pursued by Verizon. They're operationally have some, some issues. For one, they have, they have fans that are cooling and they don't meet noise standards in most communities. Your noise ordinance is usually measured to the property line. The property line of the open space is just a few feet behind the pole and it's, that might be a problem. Second problem is every time there's a rainstorm, there's a great opportunity for the site to fail because if the sump pumps that are inside it fail, the radio equipment's destroyed. The third reason why they don't install them is it really doesn't take that much equipment off the pole. In the case of this particular proposal, only the radio is the only thing that could go on the pole. The meter has to stay above ground. The emergency disconnect has to stay on the pole above ground and the antenna has to stay on the pole above ground for them to actually work. So, the only thing would be the one box that would go underground. Verizon hasn't installed any underground vaults in Northern California. They have sublet network assets through the likes of Crown Castle who has put in some vaults and those vaults have been a significant source of operational trouble, so they're not pursuing them, not installing them anymore.
Thank you.
Can you, I'm sorry, through the chair, can you clarify, because it said that it will be on the utility pole, it will be 100 and, towards the northwest side of the utility pole. So, the box will be facing where exactly on your layout?
So, utility poles are divided into quadrants and the quadrants are relative to the street and we have to utilize those quadrants in the case of the pole. If you look at page. A2, you will see that the equipment is located on the quadrant of the pole, which is on the opposite side of the pole from the nearest residence. That's a sufficient way to answer your question or?
Yeah.
Direction.
Looks like it face southwest.
Southwest, correct.
So, it's facing away from the house that's closest, the residence that's closest.
That's correct. The house would be.
Okay. And then when you're talking about the, as I, as I asked at the very beginning or near the beginning, the, the width of that box, that shroud is 14 inches?
14.7 inches wide.
14.7 inches, about 15 inches and then you have the pole, which is about nine to 10 inches in diameter.
Or probably a little bigger than 10, 10 to 11 inches would be mine.
10 inches, so we're talking about five feet, I mean, five inches wider than the pole.
Two and a half per side.
So, two and a half per side that somebody would be seeing and, right?
Actually, I, I think the design is nice as can be for what you're trying to achieve. It's a square pole. It's a lot better than some of the older stuff that's out there that's got wires.
We think this is a much better design than even some of the first generation of small cells that, that we've installed. So, they, it has evolved and this is the best technology that we can provide today.
How long has it been since your first, first cell sites and so?
Well, for small cells, I think maybe the question that you.
Well, because you're talking about generation, so that it's changed and.
Yes.
10 years, five years?
I've been in the industry 25, so, I mean, they, they've been evolving, you know, continuously since we started putting big towers on top of mountain tops with big shelters next to them. As far as even when we started with small cells, it was probably about three to four years ago, there is fewer radios. The radios now, this radio that we're proposing is dual-band, so it can do two frequencies at once, which means that we only have to have one unit instead of two units. And then, you know, there's also not just the best design, but Verizon has compromised on some of the potential assets they would generally prefer to have, to have the best network locations to make this more aesthetically acceptable to the city of Millbrae, so that not, not just is there better technology available, but we've also made some significant compromises to, to improve the aesthetics for you.
Okay. I mean, I guess my, my question is then, I guess, for, for staff, kind of going back to that, are there ways in which we can tighten this up, the conditions, more wording? I, I know that they, you've already put some thought into it, but to me, the fact that it is in open space, that it is shrouded as much as it is, I just feel like, you know, maybe this would be okay here, but I would be, I would want to really tighten it up to say, you know, with residential areas, we're going to be a lot more, you know, even more stringent about things and, and if there's technology, because if your first generation was three or four years ago and it's already adapted this much, then over the 10-year period, if there is newer technology to be able to get it even more streamlined, could we add something like that in here?
If I might make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you wanted to add some language to that as a condition of your, you know, as a modified condition of approval in a motion, we might accept it if you pass the language by me. I might be able to, you know, accept it on the spot.
Referring to which part?
For example, if you wanted to say, in the future, if there's a better technological solution that is smaller or more aesthetically pleasing, that, that Verizon would come back to the planning commission and employ that, if you wanted to add that, you know, as a condition, I could accept that as part of a modified condition of approval with the resolution. I don't know if, within your city, if you normally accept additional conditions from the commission.
We do, but I don't, I don't know how that would work, because we, I mean.
How often would be?
Yeah, I mean.
It's a tricky question, to be perfectly honest, because.
What the enforcement would be, right?
It depends on the technology you're talking about. It depends on what Verizon's network needs are, because they may have a, a network need A and a network need B somewhere else, and it doesn't necessarily mean that this facility has the need B to get different equipment at it. So, but, but, but as a show of good faith, I think that if there is smaller equipment that does what the site needs to do, we would be encouraged to modify it.
Well, that's what the, I believe, what the discretionary permit expiration date would be for, so every five years could reevaluate.
That was my, yeah.
I think it's 10, I think legally has to be 10 years for telecommunications facilities.
So, could it be written to be a shorter time with a review or something, or, or to put in a review period in middle? Are they?
Can we get, ask questions for staff, please? Sorry.
Oh, go ahead. I think they're trying to, I'm sorry, I'm opening up cans of worms, that, this kind of.
I think a shorter.
A shorter time period?
From the applicant perspective, we would request that you may, you stay consistent with state law and that it would be the permit valid for 10 years. As far as the conditions of approval, if you wanted to write it to where there is a.
If you can.
I'm not sure exactly how you want to word it.
Because I think staff is talking, so.
Yeah, I apologize, or it's just, it's sort of a complicated question. So, they're correct, they do have a, a valid period of 10 years. If the applicant were amenable and there was a condition that was worded that within a certain amount of time before that 10 years, they're willing and able to come back or that there's new technology that's available that's smaller, it's something along those lines that would have to be crafted if, if the applicant's amenable to that, that type of condition.
Understand that there's a cost involved for every installations and that you have to be able to recuperate that investment and also understand that these technologies move pretty quickly over time in the last. I mean, I think from the time we first heard about this project until now, there has already been some changes in terms of equipment, what's available.
And I feel, even without having to express, you know, permission of my client right now, I, I feel confident that obviously it would be at least three or four years that we would want to keep the facility the way it is before this review, but, but typically facilities get changed or modified through time anyway and the odds on it staying unchanged for 10 years are probably not great. We'd come before you anyway with the technology change. If I can remind you that 10 years ago, the very first iPhone just came out, 10 years from now, we would expect changes.
Right. And even since we've got the very first permit, this changed a lot and that's why, I guess, you know, we're talking about, do we have the best that we, you know, it's always going to evolve and, yeah, and.
We wouldn't be amenable to changing it every year, you know?
Right. And we wouldn't, I mean, that's not the point, but I think just at the same time locking it in for 10 years, I think as long as we make sure it doesn't get worse, but in fact that if there's a way to make it better, I feel like that might make things a little bit.
I don't know how to, I don't know how you would word that specifically.
Like the five, we have done like a review.
Sorry. Suppose the discretionary use permit could be with a special condition that it's valid for less than 10 years, something like maybe three or four, like what you said a little earlier?
No, I know. I mean, the, the use permit would have to be, state law says it's, it's 10 years.
10.
So, it's going to be 10 years. I think that there can be a request that if the, and this is where I'm not sure about how, how to functionally word it, to say if there is, you know, a more visually, a least impactful visual solution that provides the same network coverage between now and the expiration of the permit, that Verizon come back to the commission and, and seek your approval to improve it.
I think they're writing something. So, I'm just.
Trying to offer helpful suggestions.
Would it be helpful for us to take a quick break or you guys could?
I think we have a concept here, so it would take probably just a few minutes to flesh out the language and propose that to commission and the applicant for consideration. So, five minutes?
Five minutes?
I'm sorry, before you, can I, through the chair, just one, before we do, the other thing is with regards to the open space zoning, the fact that it's open space zoning, would it put any more teeth into it if we were to say, and not a residential district? I don't know if that makes any difference at all.
Open space and residential, I believe, are mutually exclusive. I don't, I don't know that we have anything in the.
Right. So, it doesn't, it wouldn't make it put any more teeth in it, right, to be able to say we're only, because my concern is going back to my very first question, which was, or one of my questions before the meeting was precedence and, you know, setting a tone for that and so trying to make it as tight as possible where, you know, for me personally, the fact that it's in an open space zone district, it's a little more palatable as opposed to anything residential in, in a residential zoning district.
Through the chair, I guess it would remind, if, if the commission has any other input on, on other factors that they believe are, are pertinent to why, why they're willing to make the finding that there are no significant visual impacts for this particular application, I think we could, we could incorporate those, the, that input into this finding and either provide you with a revised copy tonight or the next meeting so that, that incorporates all of your, your input. So, if there's anything else that anybody has, that anybody finds pertinent, we can make those additions as well as this additional condition of approval.
Five-minute break? We'll be back at 8:50. Okay, 10 minutes is what we needed, but we got that done. Staff, you have something to read to us?
Yes, we do, thank you. So a suggestion for a potential condition of approval could be something that would read the following. Every four years, applicant agrees to report back to the community development director the best available technology and equipment specifications, which would improve the aesthetic appearance by reducing or eliminating equipment from the pole, from the existing pole. If the director determines that any new technology or equipment is available that would effectively reduce the aesthetic impact without substantially impairing service of the facility, applicant agrees to modify the facility to utilize the new technology. Any dispute of the director determination is appealable to the planning commission. So that is just proposed language that the applicant would be amenable to. Now, if the planning commission would like any changes or doesn't agree in concept with that, that's before you.
That does not automatically extend that 10-year from the day it is approved, is it? Just want to confirm that.
I like it.
Maybe a proposed minor change to that is that the, about initiation of who is responsible for checking in. Can we have the city change that the city of Millbrae will contact Verizon? So our concern is that Verizon has a lot of facilities. We would not want to forget to come in in four years and check in with you and have the condition and be out of compliance.
So maybe we can say that every four years from the date of the approval, the city may request that Verizon produce this report and Verizon has, what, 30 days to...
That would be fine, yes.
But I think he's asking the city of Millbrae to send them a reminder.
Basically.
They'll do that, that'll be, that was in what you just said?
Yes, so it puts the onus on us to contact them.
Send them, hey, it's time for that report?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Otherwise, we are amenable and acceptable to that.
Does anybody have anything else to say? Kathy's going...
So were there any other modifications to the findings that the commission wanted to make?
I'm sorry, I know I keep going with the direction, but the direction, just to clarify. The direction is facing the street away from... I just want to get a better view of what that looks like because I think that's the biggest concern.
Oh, my God.
So you have these views, do you have a way to pull this up on the... Okay. And then if you can show from somebody on...
I believe, tell me if I'm mistaken, but the point is, is that the residences that have the view of this box, you want it to be opposite of their view so that they would...
Just want to confirm what they would see, yes.
Yeah, they're not going to see it.
Yeah, we don't have a photo sim from the direction of the house, but in this photo simulation, you can see this street here is...
Santa Margarita.
Santa Margarita, and this is where Barcelona goes down this way. And then the nearest adjacent house is over here, which would put it opposite of side of the pole from the nearest property.
We can perhaps add to the findings that the equipment is on the opposite side of the pole from the nearest resident and that the, at its widest point, the equipment extends only about 2.2 and 1/2 inches beyond the pole, beyond the width of the pole on either side. I believe that was, this was the number.
Well, I mean, it's in the drawings, if you prove the drawings, that's the size that specified in the drawings. I think it, I don't know, it might be redundant, but...
And it has to be, the rotations have to be, what are the, what's the flexibility of rotations?
The flexibility of the rotation is limited. And I don't, I, without having one of my engineers here with me to tell me how flexible we are, generally, there is one quadrant of the pole that has to be reserved for climbing space that we can't go into. And that kind of depends on the arrangement of the pole higher up, which face is set aside for climbing space. There also has to be space for our conduits when they come up from the, from our equipment to get to the top of the pole, there's no conflicts, like we can't go over somebody else's, you know, fiber line or cable TV line on the pole. So it is a little bit restrictive. Generally, I would say that there is zero, one, and at most two quadrants that we can utilize on a pole. So it's rare that there's even three quadrants available to us. So there would be this quadrant that we, that I know because we have it engineered is acceptable. I don't know if there are any others. At the very best, there might be one other quadrant, and it would be in 90-degree sections of the pole. So currently, the quadrant that we're on, here's the pole, the quadrant that we're on faces this direction.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry, it's hard to...
I know, it's hard to do both.
To do both at the same time here, I can...
There's a hand mic, is it there?
Oh. Working. Working. Hello?
There you go.
There it goes. The quadrant of the pole that we're on right now is on this side of the pole, over here, this bush pit representing the pole. So the quadrants would be delineated in that order. In other words, there'd be this side of the pole that we're on, 180 degrees on this side would be another quadrant, out facing the street would be the third quadrant, then in towards the trees would be the fourth quadrant. I can tell you from our, when we try to design these, we try to put it closest to the most concealment. I don't think that the backside, in the backside, is probably not available, otherwise we would have originally located there. The street side might be available, that would be more visually intrusive in our opinion.
Okay, thank you.
So I propose if we make a motion on approving this, that it would be with that condition that it faces opposite of the residential houses.
That's the way it's designed in the drawing, so it would be...
That's what the plans say.
And then also that it would have a color scheme that would be as close to the pole as in the drawings here.
We specify, I think, in the drawings, I think it's called deep, it's a valve spar color called deep earth, it's a brown. We are open to whatever color you want. I can, it's a wood pole, it's not painted, so you can't match it precisely. Let me see what color spec we have.
It'd be less visual if it was...
Yeah, it's valve spar, deep earth.
As dark or darker than the existing pole?
I'm sorry?
It would be, would it be more stealthy if it was as dark or darker than the existing pole?
It's a pretty dark brown. Hard for me to tell you, I mean, poles age in weather and they're made out of wood and they're creosote soaked, and when they're new, they're darker than when they're old. We've not had any complaints with the color, we've used it on hundreds of facilities. But if you tell me you have a different color that you would prefer, we don't honestly have an opinion on it.
Wood green, I know I'm coming up with a bunch of different things, but wood green, because there are trees, do you think that would help at all? Is there a green that it would look good on?
If you want a green as a condition, we would do it. In my professional opinion, I would suggest that that dark brown is the best possible concealment color. It blends it most to the pole and it blends in with the background.
Okay. I mean, because this one happens to have a lot of trees in back of it, that's why I'm just trying to...
The darker colors make it less stand out, too.
Can we, is there a reason for the four-year review?
Our request?
Was that, is that what the...
Was it four years? Because we don't want to have to come back repeatedly and change equipment every other year. We'd like it to sit for a little bit.
That would be two reviews in the first 10 years. That's kind of a lot.
Part of the incentive, I guess, of encouraging or encouraging Verizon to install new equipment that would be more stealth and smaller is just if there was some incentive. So I think if, when we complete the guidelines for the antenna sites, if there's whatever incentives we can come up with, like, I'm not sure if it's in the guidelines, if you're thinking of maybe limiting the number of sites across the city so that they're not on every single telephone pole and so forth, as like someone in the public audience mentioned. But we should think about limiting the number of sites and then as an incentive for them downsizing if they're able to, you know, add additional sites if they're very small, you know? I mean, there's trade-off between bulky and visually unappealing, but if it's completely stealthy, I'm not sure how much more the public would be concerned because it wouldn't have any appearance or wouldn't appear as long as they're satisfied with the health, not, it being not, there not being any health effects to these. So something in our antenna ordinance about the number of sites addressing that and the smaller the equipment and the more obscure, non-visible, then allow them to have, more sites might be a consideration, something to think about. And then that would give the future incentive for reducing the size so that they can put in more sites. And obviously, if you have smaller equipment, you may have more sites versus one big bulky tower versus, you know, many small antennas.
Anything else on this antenna?
Just a little comment about timeline. I used to be in the computer networking industry. Four years is a very, very long time, actually, for, it's almost like a light year. These equipments have a, they have a long lifespan, I mean, they're engineered for a very long lifespan, they're supposed to work for a long time, but technology usually outpaces the lifetime of these equipments in the sense that, you know, by that time, four years later, I should propose, 5G, probably 5G is probably well implemented, and you're going to probably need new equipment in order for you to compete in the telecommunications space among different carriers. So chances are, they would probably have voluntarily swapped all these equipments for better equipments just for market share purposes anyway, and for lower cost of operation. So if I were to make a proposal, it would be three instead of four. But that's just based on my understanding of the industry. It sounds very frequent and it sounds like a very short period of time, but chances are, these equipments don't usually need to stay in that surface but for that long in order for them to recuperate their investment. They make a lot of money off of these equipments. They're very expensive as well, but they get outdated pretty quickly, just so you know.
I appreciate your expertise for sure, because I have none. But if they're going to swap it out anyway in three years, then our four-year review will be irrelevant. So, well, then if they didn't, they will say, hey, what were you thinking? Right? I don't know, I just, it takes so long for everything to happen as well. They're just, they're going to get this thing in place and we're going to say it's time for another report. I just, I don't know, four years feels okay to me, but... Anybody else got an opinion? Three or four years?
On treasury, I work in the public sector and in the public sector, technology doesn't progress very rapidly, just like... And so...
This is a highly competitive business.
Yeah, I mean, if the private industry maybe moves a lot faster, a lot more competition, but usually in the public sector, we run things until the useful life wears out. And then it gets replaced after a lot of petitioning for public funds. But yeah, there's pros and cons.
Want to be sensitive to staff time, too, because they'll have to do more work again every time, so...
From the applicant's perspective, four is really the best I can offer. From the applicant's perspective, four is, is really the best I can offer timelines. I do think, though, that you're correct that there is probably a good chance that this, the facility may be upgraded or modified, you know, before you, prior to that, coming up. But this will ensure that there will be a review in a reasonable amount of time to get you the best possible facility within your community.
Anything else? Perhaps a motion?
Before a motion, I'll just say, I, I concur with Commissioner Feng that three years, I, I would prefer the three years, but I, I mean, I know, the three years review or whatever request that, I mean, I'm, so I'm just saying that that's what, I mean, I know it seems like, you know, it's twice as many, it's one more time of review. And I think, I mean, we got the first submission in October of 2017 and it has changed in that period of time. It's not even two years and it's changed and it's gotten more streamlined. And that's why, you know, so I'm just saying I would concur with that. I'm not going to necessarily go against it because it's four versus three, if that's the rest of the commissioner's thing.
No. A motion?
No, no, no. He, his note, he noted that he would prefer the three-year period. So I'm just saying that I would.
He make a motion to that effect?
I'm just making, we're just making comments right now. So I'm just, I was just making my comment to add to that, that I, I would, I would prefer that.
Do we have any consensus? I think that's the first question we should ask about ourselves. Are we comfortable with a motion to approve with a three-year or four years and whatever that number come up to be to give them that equipment?
Okay. Flexible. Flexible. So you were going to make a motion, maybe?
Is there anybody against three? Is, like, said against three or are we all?
I prefer, I, they stood down there and worked out a deal at four. And he said he could take that back and not have any pushback. If he comes back and this all falls apart because it's three, that would be another
I'd be surprised.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like I, I would be surprised if, if it fell apart because of three versus four when, I mean, the fact that we're even open to doing this is a concession in a way. So I, I, you know what I mean? I, I think, so. So we're not doing them a favor, they're not doing us a favor. I don't know what I'm trying to say, but you know what I mean? It's to say, well, they, they agreed on four and so that's why we have to kind of go by it.
I'm just saying, I'm taking that into my decision-making.
Other commissioners?
I would think four years, as they proposed, would be sufficient because if there's a ten-year duration for the use permit, then that gives them two chances to upgrade and then demonstrate good faith before they renew the permit. Or if we see that something's being, not taken care of, or poles are hanging off and they don't do anything about it, then we've already sent them two letters asking them for any upgrades or, or if there's potential upgrades or modifications to this.
Well, I think.
Sorry. You would, you, you probably don't need to wait four years before you find out because the next application that comes in, if they have a different equipment and it's small and better and less noisy or whatever that might be, if it's better, you already knew. You know, you know what I mean?
And then if we're talking, I mean, in terms of maintenance and poles and things hanging out, that's not a, that's not part of this four-year. That's just, they're required to keep it up, maintain it. So I think if there were any issues like that, that should come up way before.
And I guess, although technologies will evolve rapidly, if the box was a mere two inches smaller, would that be enough for them to have to do it if that was two years from now? I mean, then I think we have to start talking about what is the significant improvement. And then that gets a little dodgy, I think.
My imaginings or, or my hope, or at least the history that I have seen in the past, is that they come up with better equipment with higher capacity that require less equipments instead of just being smaller. You know, that would cause them less to operate, you know, from their perspective, you know, when they make a decision to upgrade these equipment, usually comes down to two things. Costs less to operate and be able to have higher capacity in order for them to compete on faster surfaces, usually. So the size of these equipment usually is less of a concern for them, but, you know, they, the bigger they are, the more equipment there is, the more it's going to cost them to run it, I would imagine. Because it takes more power, it takes more moving parts, and it's eventually costs them more to run it. Usually, they are coming up with smaller and more powerful devices. Is that true? You're the expert.
It, it is generally true. Four years also. I, I want to make sure my client has the ability to fully depreciate the equipment they're going to take off and possibly throw away. You know, I mean, there's, there's, we could talk for, quite extensively. It, it may take us from even your approval now to where we get the facility on air. It still may be another year before we even get the facility on air, right? So there's a lot that goes into construction and arrangement of that. So I, I'm, I'm still advocating for, in agreeing the four-year mark and I hope that you guys can find it acceptable.
Anybody?
Okay, I'll make a motion because we're going to be stuck here. Sorry. We're going to be stuck here. So I make a motion to go ahead and approve for the discretionary use permit to allow the wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment for commercial purposes on private property within the public right-of-way in open space zoning district at the 797 Santa Margarita site, subject to the conditions and findings in the staff report and that additional special condition. Do, can, can you read it for us or if we're just to allow for that review of the extra four years as stated by staff earlier? Is that okay? To say it that way? Or do you want to say it?
I'll go ahead and read into the record here. So the condition would state, every four years from the date of this approval, the city may request that the permittee or its successor in the signs provide a report to the community development director indicating the best available technology and equipment specifications, which would improve the aesthetic appearance and/or result in the reduction or elimination of equipment from the existing pole. Permittee must produce the report within thirty days. Upon receipt of the report, if the director determines that any new technology or equipment is available that would effectively improve the aesthetic impact of the facility, without substantially impairing the facility, the applicant agrees to modify the facility to utilize the new technology. Any dispute of the director's determination is appealable to the planning commission.
I'm good with that.
I'll make one more comment. I'd be willing to second that on the condition that, given the finding that this project is located in an open space zoning district and that all the neighboring properties are within low-density residential zoning. And the closest residential neighbor is at least eighty feet away from the proposed installation site. And the uniqueness of this location, that being the subject utility pole, was screened by very, very dense vegetations and trees. And therefore, it helps mitigate the aesthetic and visibility issues of these equipments. Under those circumstances, I'll be happy to second that.
I believe most of that is addressed in the resolution, but is there more that we can add to it? Is there anything that's missing? And we need to correct that thirty-five feet to eighty. But I think that was very well stated. So I just want to make sure everything was covered in here. Is it all covered in here?
It's all there, I think.
If there's specific wording or specific phrasing that you would like added in, perhaps that would be the, the best way to incorporate your comments?
Have it in?
I think Commissioner Feng mentioned the low resident.
So that was in the low-density.
Low-density residential close by? Is that, that's not in here?
We can add that.
Eighty feet needs to be corrected and then there's the dense vegetation, which is.
Right, but it's not in the finding. So just to add it into the, into that.
Into C.
Into C, on page ten of the resolution.
Okay.
Is there anything?
So I just want to make sure that this is a very, very specific narrow findings for the approval.
And so we would be bringing back this resolution for your final review.
Is that required?
Bring it back one more time?
Well, I just think that we need to make sure that we get the language correct. We have the language as stated for the added condition. I think we just need to take a little bit of time with the finding. I think if it's, if it's really just about the eighty feet being corrected and Commissioner Feng's comment about very, very dense trees and vegetation to articulate how this site is, you know, on its own merit, then I think that can be handled, for sure.
Does it?
Does it need to, I don't think it needs coming back.
Fine, we'll make the correction.
But I would add that it's open space zoning district bordered by low-density residential.
All of them were low-density residential.
I'm sorry.
All of which, all the neighbors were low-density residential.
Bordered.
All the neighbors.
All of them.
Okay.
Nearby properties.
Right, suppose, you know, if any one of them was like an R2 or R3, then it would be different.
Straight, but.
Is that easy to do?
It's not a residential.
So it's been seconded, then?
No, nobody know.
Yeah, I'd like to see the complete plan with all the sites submitted. But in the future, that'd be ideal.
So the vote is four to one. Motion carries. Ten-day appeal. Congratulations. New business? Yep, we have a, we have a meeting. New business, none. Staff updates?
Yes, just one update I wanted to make the commission aware. So you've had the chance to have all of us here before you at the last few meetings. The city does have an approved administrative assistant position that we are moving forward with filling that position. So hopefully at the next meeting, or if not that one, the first meeting in February, we'll have a new person sitting here with us that will help with minutes and, and recordation of the meeting, as well as preparing, you know, communications to the planning commission. So I just wanted to make you aware that the city is moving forward with the hiring of that position.
Also, tomorrow, there's a city council, the special.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, and then tomorrow, there is a city council meeting and the, there will be a study session on the Gateway Millbrae Station, the TOD number two project. And oh, and then also the Chevron Station is going to be considered by the council that was previously approved by the planning commission.
Is that appealed?
It was, it was a request, a request for review from council.
Okay, but it wasn't appealed by somebody else?
No.
It wasn't appealed.
Microphone? With TOD one?
Right, so tentatively, now that is also scheduled for a study session before council, I believe on the fifteenth.
Of?
Correct.
No.
No, I'm sorry. That's not right. The twenty-second. Yes.
Will it be, oh, the twenty-second. Oh, bummer, I'm not going to be here. Okay.
Also, receive an email about polling, a date at which we can all meet on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth? Do we need to talk about that?
Yeah.
Yes. Staff pulled planning commissioners, the next date falls on the MLK holiday, so we do have quorum for January twenty-fourth. And so staff will be sending out an email to confirm that date.
Twenty-fourth?
January twenty-fourth, yes.
And how many projects do we have in front of us on that date? Two, twenty? Fair enough.
Any commission comments?
In, in my.
I do have a comment. I don't know if anyone is going to talk to the, the Indian restaurant that had come before us. Remember the one, the Indian restaurant? And Commissioner Joe and I both had some question on the color. If you talked to them, could you tell them? I think it looks lovely.
Didn't know where you were going with that.
Well, you know, it just looked so before, and I happened to go downtown and I thought, it looks really nice. And I think we should tell them that, that.
You can go there and tell them.
Yeah, I mean, and we kind of crucified them a little bit, you know, on the color. And I just, I, I mean, they came up with a very soft-looking, nice deep blue, but it's a nice palette. Did you notice it?
Yeah, I, I told them that I liked it.
You told the people at the restaurant?
Because I go there, yeah. I go there every once in a while.
Go in now and have dinner, because the food is delicious.
Order Indian food.
We'll go, you come with me.
Okay. Commission-related comment? Are we, we had tabled the work plan, I think, or did we approve that? We didn't, right? Okay, so, because I think that's important. And the cell site ordinance, I think, is really important. I mean, we, I, I don't know, I, I know there's a lot going on, but I think this, I mean, tonight is hard enough, but I, I think it's going to be, anything else they want to do in the city is going to be really hard to move forward without having a, a master plan and without having a master ordinance, a cell site ordinance. So you know, in conjunction with our whole work plan, I'd, I'd really like to see that come up and maybe should be, we should put it on a real priority. And if there is a way to help, is there a way that we can help? Do research? I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I, I think we need to get this hap- done because as long as we don't have one, you know, it's, we're, our hands are tied.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. I, I, I think that is absolutely important and we, and we hear you. And so that is something that is high on our list. And I think it would be also a good thing to have the commission make that as part of their work program. So when we come back with that discussion, let's give some consideration about making that a, a priority.
We had it in our work plan, but we just don't have it in order of anything and we wanted to talk about it more, so. And is there a way, have cities just, have cities done like a moratorium on new sites before we get an ordinance in place?
So we are, the shot clock continues to run despite any ordinance, or any moratorium that we may pass. So we, any moratorium would not be effective.
But the shot clock could mean, even if they have put in, but if they, if they did put one, even though you say it's not effective, if Verizon is on notice that we do have a moratorium in place, wouldn't that at least discourage them or would they just not care? You know, if we say, well, technically, we have a moratorium, that means we don't want to look at any projects until we get an ordinance in place.
Or would that actually place into their favor, knowing that, you know, we already have some sort of a stance on these issues?
Yeah, next, next week, you're going to get ten submissions.
Application, twenty applications. So, you know, that's just, just jam it in before they actually have anything. Think about it. Let us know later.
Have we received any other carriers submissions? So it's interesting, Verizon's shut up, set up shop right in downtown. And then competition seems like they're moving really fast. So T-Mobile or any other carriers, if they're, no. Okay. So that's good to know because a lot of people are really worried. It's noted that every, you know, the pole's going to have five different antennas on it, with different carriers. And then the number of sites, you know, it seems like Verizon's willing to come. And then the number of sites, you know, it seems like Verizon's willing to compromise the site locations, but I'm not sure if that's a trade-off in the size of the equipment, if they need bigger equipment and less sites or if they can go smaller with more sites. So I'm not sure if there's a way to be able to limit the number of sites in the city so that it doesn't get unrestricted or out of hand for 20, you know, I think Verizon, they had, originally at one point, they had 20 sites proposed, right?
So I think Verizon does have, Verizon and other telecommunications providers have the right to be in the public right-of-way. There's a state law that allows them a substantial amount of discretion, ability to just stick their equipment into the public right-of-way and limits their ability to regulate that. I think all of this is, I think we can discuss all of this further when the ordinance comes up.
One more commission comment, it's that February 16, there's going to be a street fair for the Chinese New Year. Everybody's welcome to join. There'll be lion dance, dragon dance, performance. It'll be fun. Yes?
February 16, where?
Next to the library, the parking lot.
Did I know?
I'm sorry, no. Wait, no, February 16. Not March.
So it sounds like we've.
If there's a change, I'll let you know.
Perfect, just get it on the calendar. And if we're, on to announcements, the Millbrae Education Foundation released tickets for its second annual gala today. The event is March 2nd. The theme is Great Gatsby and I hope everybody can go and support our schools. It's going to be a fun night. Last year's inaugural one was amazing. Get your tickets, support our schools.
Sorry, which, can you repeat that?
MEF Gala. March 2nd. Get your tickets.
You know what, it's going to be here before you know it.
Get your tickets, you don't want to miss. Anything else? We're adjourned.